Planning Commission meeting. We're glad to see you all here. If you didn't get a chance to sign in, make sure you sign in outside there. We start each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, Alfred?
Chair Anderson.
You're here.
Vice Chair Erickson.
Here.
Commissioner Tippes is excused. Commissioner Snow.
Here.
Commissioner Littke is excused. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Casperian.
Here.
Can we get a... Did you guys look at the minutes? Any comments?
No comments.
We have a move to approve the minutes.
It doesn't sound like you like your phones or anything.
Can you hear me now? Am I going to have to use the phone?
On it? Yeah, does that sound better?
Okay, minutes.
Okay.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes for March 26, 2025 meeting.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, it's public hearing, and we have a few things on our agendas tonight. And just as a reminder, we will time you for your comments so that we don't go over, because there seem to be quite a few, so... And try and keep it as concise, and if...
We really can't queue in here, do you think?
Okay.
It just sounds like you're talking...
The TV's on in the back room, and I'm far before moves back. That's what it sounds like. Okay. All right, let's get started. We're going to do the Brad Reynolds' request, conditional use permit approval for a medium high-density residential development located at 350 West California Drive in the transit or...
Oriented.
Oriented. Wow, development TOD zone. And Johnny or Adam?
Adam.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commissioners. Elizabeth is out tonight, so I will be covering this item. As you stated, this is for a development at approximately 350 West California Drive. It's the former CenturyLink site, and the proposal is for a 117 town home unit development project on the piece. So to the east and south is existing single-family residential. To the north is commercial. Some of it is fairly new. It was constructed within the last probably two years. And then to the west is an existing apartment unit complex. I believe it's mid-century...
Mid-central.
Mid-central. Yeah, mid-central. Thank you. So this, the request tonight is, one, for a conditional use permit, and, two, for a subdivision, a preliminary subdivision approval. The conditional use permit itself has a number of items that need to be met in order for the conditional use to be considered for approval. The applicant, the developer, has met those items, and I will briefly touch on some of them, just for the benefit of not only the commission, but for those in the audience tonight. So it's a proposal for a three... The townhomes will each be three stories. Again, the total number of units is 117. The zoning is TOD, which is transit-oriented development, and the maximum density for the zone is 25 units per acre. The project as proposed comes in at 21, so they're slightly below that, but they're not asking for any exceptions. They're not asking for any increases in the allowance for that. Concern that I know that exists not only in Midvale but in surrounding communities is parking. They are parked. They're meeting and exceeding the parking requirement as it's called out in our code. They're not asking for any reductions or considerations in parking. For this project, they would be required to have 205 parking stalls. They are going to provide actually 234 for the residents, and then they also are providing the required 30 guest stalls. So there will be a total of 256 parking spaces for this project, for both residential and guest parking. Again, they're not asking for any reduction. They're meeting and exceeding the parking requirement. They're also meeting the required landscaping and improvements that are required for this type of project. I forget that I can go through here. So here's the, basically, the subdivision plat that's going through with this tonight. You can see the layout. A lot of the buildings are oriented north and south, and then a few are east and west along the north side of the property. So access will be provided off of California. This is the site plan, just kind of zoomed in a little closer to the project. And then this is the landscaping plan that shows the proposed improvements and amenities. There are some central areas that will serve as common space and park area, and they're providing the required amount of improved landscaping as called out in the code. So with that, I can try to answer any questions you might have. The applicant or the developer is here as well and is happy to answer any specific questions, but that's a brief overview. I will, again, these are elevations, so there are different types of elevations. Again, each building is three stories, so they are three-story townhome units, and then each building varies slightly. These will be all market rate for purchase. This is not just kind of a one company that rents everything out. These will be individually sold. So when we're ready for a motion, I can put that up, but I'll just kind of go back, leave it on the landscape or the site plan for right now. But with that, I'll answer any questions.
I don't have any at this time.
None.
And again, if you'd like to speak with the applicant's representative, he is here tonight, so...
Do you want to come up? State your name, please.
Yeah, my name's Paul Randstrom, here representing Brad Reynolds Construction, the developer. I want to thank Adam for introducing the project, and thank you for allowing us to discuss the project before the commission this evening. I think Adam did a good job of covering the project. We just want to emphasize our objective was to provide a reasonably affordable home that's for sale. We thought a for-sale product would fit the community better than a for-rent product. Just the owner-occupied residents will be a little more committed to the community, we feel like, so we feel like that's a better fit. We initially had thought about trying apartments or a rental product on this property, but have decided to do a for-sale product. Quality units, nice brick, fiber cement siding on the exterior, no stucco at all on the exteriors, even though the code does allow for some. We've tried to keep them as nice as we can. But with that, if you have any specific questions for me, again, thank you for allowing us to come discuss tonight.
Nothing.
Doesn't seem like it. Thank you very much. So we'll open this up to the public hearing, which is your turn. Just a reminder, keep it short and sweet.
We will have a timer of three minutes.
Yeah.
Correct? Three minutes, and we ask that you come up once. There's, in the past, there have sometimes been a lot of repeat comments or people having a question at the very end, so we're trying to make it efficient, but also make sure that the comments are pointed.
When you come up, please state your name.
Good. There you go.
Hi, my name is Randy Duffin. I live on 325 West Pine Street. Oh, no, 7401, yeah, anyway. I live on Pine Street, which I can see this big, great, big ass building in my neighborhood. And I think, I don't mind the building being there, I think it's too high. And there's not, I mean, you look at the maps, there's not even a place for the people to park in front of their complex. They have to row and drive right into the garage. They have to have some kind of, some way to go, someplace to park their car and get their groceries out. And I don't see that anywhere in that picture. And then another thing, I brought up to the contractor, somehow, Vols have taken over our neighborhood. And he said he was going to, at that last meeting we had, he said he was going to hire exterminator and take care of it. Nobody has seen that exterminator or that contractor. And how are they going to pay for, how much of our Rosengate tore up to build this water and sewer and gas line? That's my biggest question. And I rest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I live immediately behind the project. I have to go with Mr. Duffin on the Vole gopher ant weed problem, where there is a 40-year undisturbed piece of property. You have a 55-year-old residential area. I have 10,000 square feet of worthless shit that I pay $500 a month to not be that way. It's not enough money. The Vole problem, the gopher problem, the weeds, the ants, anything you want to do to help would be super. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Megan Davis. I live on Pine Street, a few doors down from Randy. I have a fight-for-old son, and 117 units brings a lot of traffic, and that sucks. We bought our house during COVID, so no one was in the CenturyLink building for majority of the time we've lived there, and we've loved that. We've loved having a little bit of a quieter street. A lot of the residents in our neighborhood have lived there for 50 years, right? My next-door neighbor moved out just last year, but he was there when the house was built. So this is a community that a lot of people have poured their hearts, their lives into this. I will also second the Vole issue, which we can put on the back burner, but that sucks right now. Our yard is full of holes, which was not the case before this building started construction or they started digging. I also wanted to touch on the character of our neighborhood. Like I said, there's a lot of community members who have lived there for 50 years. We're newer, but as you can see, a lot of our community is an older generation, and we want young families. I know we said reasonably affordable. Not sure what that means. Affordable would be great. We would love to have more young families in the neighborhood. But again, the size and the magnitude of this is going to disrupt our neighborhood. It's going to make me and my son feel less safe with the amount of traffic that goes down our street. And as you can imagine, that sucks, having young kids. And for three stories, I mean, none of the neighbor, or none of the houses in this neighborhood are two-story homes, so this complex is going to have direct views into many backyards, many houses. We just want everyone to understand where the community and the neighborhood is coming from. Again, I'm one of the younger families in the neighborhood, and I want my son to feel safe. And, and don't get me wrong, I think affordable housing, I think having housing, more housing options for families that maybe can't afford single-family units is great and a wonderful thing, and I love that we're bringing that into the Midvale city. But again, the size and the nature of this, I just would urge you to reconsider the scale of this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Johnson on 7412 Cottonwood. I can get a seven iron onto that property there, so I'm pretty close. I want to touch on the intersection of Cottonwood and 72. We've been asking for years to get a left-turn signal there. Modus Union went up and still no turn signal that, that you can wait three light cycles before you can finally turn left on a 72. So just wondering if that's ever going to happen. And the parking on the street, Modus, or the one right there, those cars are parked all day long, all night long, and it's almost turning into like Jefferson Street, where if two cars are coming opposite directions, one has to pull off to the side in between parked cars so the other car can pass. Are we going to get no parking signs on California to help alleviate traffic? And there's probably other things, but I'm a little stage fright right now, so that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No parking, that's a good idea.
My name's Nancy Beggs, and my fence is just right there by them, so you can throw a softball over. But yeah, well, we went, a bunch of us went to the meeting because we're 500 square feet or less, so the builder had a, and that was good, he answered a lot of our questions, and I mean, it looks nice, and, you know, we're going to have to go through all that construction sounds and all that, but it doesn't seem affordable, but nothing is affordable in Utah anymore. Anyway, he said it might be $450,000 to $500,000. I mean, and you've got to make $100,000, I've heard, or more to even live in a something like that. But anyway, yeah, the gophers are a really bad problem. And the fence, we talked to him about building like a brick fence or whatever we call it, cement fence, and he said like six feet, and we would like it to be eight feet, so that was something we would like. And yeah, I guess, yeah, we're, I mean, if they made them smaller, maybe they could be cheaper. I mean, there's no housing, even the apartments, nobody could live there, so... But they do look nice, I've got to say that, and I'd rather have townhouses than apartments, so I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Caprell Falk. I live right on the corner of Pine Street in California, so my house is right where their driveway is going to be, and I'm very concerned about the amount of units. I don't really think you need to shove 117 units into that small place. And the traffic, and they already use Pine Street as a thoroughfare, which I don't understand why. It doesn't really go anywhere, but there's already more traffic than I would like to see. I moved to Midvale 30 years ago because I wanted to live into a small, live in a small town. It's no longer a small town. There is way too much traffic already, and that's how I feel. And I have, my backyard is covered with holes from Vols that started when they started tearing the building down. So it's been a couple of summers now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Basir Said, and I'm living in 7314 South Cottonwood Street, and I'm representing my six of my neighborhood just immediately with me, and they couldn't make it, I barely make it, because they are doing jobs and they were, so they asked me to speak a word for you guys. We are right in the, in front of Moda Union, and mostly we have a lot of law and order situation over there. Lot of homeless, they trespass, they park their car right in front of our homes, and we can't ask them because it's a public parking. And if you ask them, there's a problem. So first, now the, this upcoming project will further aggregate the problem. 117 units at a small place and with no parking inside, like two garages, and they're going to park on Californian Highway Drive. So they're already congested. We cannot pass, we have to wait for, as one of my neighbors was telling me, we have to wait. There's no stoplights, there's nothing. So it's going to further aggregate the situation. We need to look into that aspect. Although new housing is good, but we want to shut down the sidewalk coming from Moda Union towards our place. Can it be done, please, for the security reason? And there are no lights, there are only two lights. And I have videos at my home because I have a camera and all that. There's always a guy who comes from Moda Union, and he throws drinks on my door. A couple of times I called police, but they came, nobody was there. So we are having, for a head-on trouble, honestly. 117 units mean multiply by two, multiply by three, then you can just imagine, it's a, you're sitting on a time bomb. So please look into it, about the parking, about security. We're all concerned with the Midvale security situation, right? So we don't want that, the newcomers are welcome. I also came in and people welcomed me. I'm glad. And I'm trying to be a good neighbor and been helping my neighbors and talking to each other. So please look into it before going ahead with it. I know it won't have any effect, but still, we can raise the voice, you know? All right? And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. My name's Lauren Butler. I live on 7500 South. Is this just for the first proposal, or did you put the two together? Because there were two different ones.
Yeah, one's the conditional use and one's the subdivision, so I'll briefly cover the subdivision next, but for all intents and purposes, they can be discussed.
So the comments can be for the same one? Did you receive the petitions that we sent in? Okay. This neighborhood is not, this, this plot of land is definitely needing to be done. We've heard reputable, I've heard reputable things about the builder and all of the things that he does. I'm grateful for that. The intent, the density is a little overwhelming, to say the very least. All of those roads that California goes out to, and it's like going out to Moda, we've had that issue before, they're not going to go to Third West. They're going to come down all of those roads that are auxiliary roads, and they're going to come down to what they call Sixth Avenue on one side and 7500 on the other, and then they're going to come down and go Frontage Road. They're not going to Frontage Road, they're going to go back down to State Street, which will add those 215, 28-minute cars coming down our road. And that means I'm going to have to try and back out of my driveway. It's a, there's no townhomes, there's no apartments, there is nothing in that area from California on over. Mid-central goes out onto Catalpa, Moda goes out onto Third West, all of these entrances. It would be nice to be able to take that, and the developer has that choice. They can choose to do the mid, mid-density, high-density. The medium density is, like he said, 20, 25. I'm grateful that he even talked to the people, the residents. That's a huge thing. But also knowing that the information that they were given can kind of give you some interesting things. If you don't do this, you're going to have this. It could end up that way if you're not compliant with this other way. I'm more worried about the traffic than anything else because they're quiet roads, and they do have some children on them, and we have children on our road, and they go down 50 miles an hour, and my res, my home is now becoming a thoroughfare to dump trucks every day. Four or five go down Birch Street. So if they're putting more cars, dump trucks, and people, I think it needs to be a little bit less. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, if you didn't sign in, please sign in outside the door before you leave.
Hi, my name is Janine Johnson, 7412 Cottonwood. You heard from my husband. He did mention about the left-hand turn lane on to 7200. We were at the council meeting when Moda was going to be built. The council promised us a left-hand turn lane, and it has not been done yet. And I'm not going to talk about everything that everyone has talked about, but I'm asking you, have you looked into this? Have you studied this? What is it going to do for police, for fire, for water? We have not been on Wellwater for a couple of years. My mom gets deathly ill every time you put us on Wellwater. I would hate for that to happen again. There's a lot of implications when you're having a high density. Cottonwood Street was a through, a through street at one time. I hated it. I hated having my children grow up on a street like that. I agree with what everybody has said. This is going to cause a lot of extra taxing issues on not only the residents, but I think on the city side as well. So I would love for you to tell us if you've considered these options. So, thanks.
Thank you.
My name's John Loengier, and I live on Spruce Street, just a little ways from the development. Personally, I think this is an excellent development for this piece of property. I think we have a good developer who's interested in doing a good job with the situation. The problem isn't with the developer, as I see it. I see it as a problem with the city, who fails to react to the issue of the fact we have traffic problems in this area. There's no access north to south, from State Street to the Frontage Road. And if I lived on Cottonwood Street, I'd be really worried because there's going to be an awful lot of pressure to open that street because of the lack of access. The city has done nothing for a left-turn lane on to 7200 South. They ignore the issues that are coming up before them in the planning commission. A lot of these don't have to do with you, but with the council, but nevertheless, you need to direct your issues to traffic that's going to occur with this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If there's no more public comment...
Developer, would you like to come up and address anything?
I guess I'll say we can certainly appreciate there are always concerns that come up when there's change or redevelopment that happens in an existing community, and we can definitely appreciate that. We've tried in our design to make something that is as compatible as we can with the existing community, with the three-story tall units. We've, if you look at the site plan, we've got on most buildings on that east side, I think the code calls for a 37-foot setback, and we're closer to 45, 50 feet along that east property line because we've tried to accommodate and keep our distance from those existing single-family homes. Parking, I know it sounds like is a major concern. We've tried to go above and beyond. Adam mentioned the numbers that we've got, almost, I think it's 29 extra parking stalls above and beyond what the code in this zone requires for parking. The rodents, Brad had mentioned that that came up in the neighborhood meeting the other day, and we are intending to see what can be done to try and help alleviate that with some of those neighbors. Traffic has come up quite a bit. I have the traffic engineer here if we need to get into further details, but the traffic study that was conducted last fall showed that the community would not hinder the level of service that currently exists with the existing roads. They're all, it would kind of, the roads would keep the same grade they have now as far as the level of service for the existing streets in the area. the existing streets in the area. And I know that CenturyLink Building's been kind of a little bit dormant for a while, so people have gotten kind of used to there not being traffic there. But if we had not come in to redevelop the property and you still had a fully functional office building there with two-hundred parking spaces, there would be... You would still have some traffic, probably similar to what our project is going to produce, really.
How do you feel about the fence situation and the vaults?
Yeah.
How to go first?
Yeah. I have those at my house, too. They're really annoying. And like I said, we're willing to bring in a pest control company and see what can be done, if we can do anything to try and help alleviate that with the neighbors that are nearby. Fencing, currently, we show a six-foot fence along that east property line.
It's too short.
And I think that's what the ordinance provides for. We'd have to apply for approval for anything taller than that, from what I understand.
The planning commission has the ability to allow up to an eight-foot fence, so that's at the planning commission's discretion.
There was some concerns with police, fire, water, the capacities. These plans have been reviewed by all the city departments. The capacity is there for sewer, water, and things like that. I think that's all I had, unless you have any more specific questions for us.
Do you know how big your driveways are?
So the units are kind of an alley-load style unit. So you've got the two-car garage with a short approach out onto the alleyway. So I guess I'll address density a little bit, too. Hundred seventeen units does sound, or can sound like, a lot. It's a pretty good-sized parcel. We could have been up to a hundred and thirty-three. That would have been allowed without asking for any exceptions, so we've actually kept the density a little lower than what would have been allowed by the code. Again, trying to kind of maintain the best we can compatibility with the surrounding community.
I think the plus side is that it's owner. So you'll have an HOA?
Correct. Yep, there'll be an HOA.
Okay. I mean, it's great that it's owner, that we don't have to worry about renters. You need to realize, too, that the homeless situation will change when they're building, when you have more people in there.
Right.
Because right now, if there isn't anything, you're gonna have a problem. People recognize that there's nothing there to stop them from being there. Once you...
Right.
That's gonna cut way down on that, I would suspect.
I would agree. Having an established community there will actually, instead of a...
Really helpful.
...vacant or underutilized piece of land will... Should help with that issue.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Then, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no more public comment, I...
One more?
Wait.
Okay.
Can I say something?
After her.
Dixie Bryson, property on Cottonwood Street, Seventy-four, Twenty-sixth South, Cottonwood Street. I don't know who's doing traffic studies, but you cannot use the Frontage Road, you cannot use that monstrosity that they've built to replace all those smaller businesses. There's all kinds of traffic, and you've got an apartment building. If you wanna make it compatible to the community, it's single-family dwellings all around there, except for the apartment and the monstrosity that somebody got pushed through for who knows why. But I don't think that we should have high-density, tall-building units, sold or not. They should be single-family dwellings. That's what the area around is, single-family dwellings. And you've got more than two cars per unit, probably. I'm not concerned about parking. Well, I am concerned about parking because people that live in that other development spill over into the residential area. And Cottonwood Street has always been kind of a mess till they closed it off, and if that opens up again, it's gonna be kind of a mess. There's all kinds of traffic, and I would like to know who did the traffic study because I don't think they did an accurate job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've been before.
I mean, you can. Do you have something new to add?
She's in charge, so...
It's just quick.
I hate to be in charge.
State your name, please.
Nancy Beggs. And I've lived there like seventeen years. And right by McDonald's, every day, there's drug people. And people have been getting into that property, and homeless, and they're doing it right now. So we were concerned about security. And just today, I saw a big hole in the chain link fence, and people keep going through. So... And then the guy at our meeting talked about having security guards while they're building because people are gonna steal things and hide in there. So I guess that's my concern.
Thank you.
One last comment. Mary Lou Damianovich, Elm Street. I've lived there for like fifty years, and before that, I lived on Pine Street. Very nice area, calm. Would the developer consider less townhomes, or, as somebody already mentioned, making them a residential, single dwellings instead? There's too much going to be handled there that... Will the fire trucks be able to go down the other streets that will have people parking on both sides of the street? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there is no more public comment, I move that we close the public comment.
Hall and Faber?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So do we need to do a motion on this, Adam? Or do we do them together?
This would have its own motion, yes.
Okay. But First Attorney, what do you have for us?
Yes, so this is an administrative decision for the planning commission to make. If it does meet the city code standards, you are required to approve it. The only time you're allowed to not approve it is if it doesn't meet the code standards. And then, even then, if it can meet those standards, or those areas can be mitigated with conditions, you can approve it with mitigating things to allow it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to ask Adam about the... I know we did that Seventy-two hundred South corridor traffic study specifically. Do you recall this area around that turn signal on Third West?
That would be something that I think the city could look into, and if it's warranted, and then they could coordinate that with UDOT. But we could pass that along to Public Works or Engineering, just let them know that that's still a concern. And maybe when it was talked about a couple of years ago, maybe it was found that it wasn't warranted. So maybe that's why nothing happened, but we'll definitely follow up.
Definitely, yeah. With this study already being done, I think that there's a lot of information to be gained from that.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Do we have access to this study?
The Seventy-two hundred South corridor study, yes. It's on our website, but we're happy to walk you through that if you have any questions or even how to find it. So just reach out to any of us. Yep.
There's some really great things in there, so I encourage you to peruse it. It goes all the way up east towards Union Park.
Okay. Thank you. Can we get a motion then? Do we need to pull that up?
Excuse me? Was that study done before all of the other apartment complexes at this one? Because it's drastically gonna change.
It was done during... Or after modus was completed.
Yeah, and it anticipated future growth. So this was all anticipated. It was even anticipating higher levels of growth in other areas along Seventy-two hundred.
I would like to ask all of you to go and sit at that light for four hours, for four lights to turn, to get to the party.
Okay, now, our public hearing portion is over, and it's really difficult to keep an accurate record if we don't have... If we don't go through the protocol.
I'm asking you to just go try it.
We all live in Midvale, so we all are familiar with the area.
I don't have any concerns. It seems to meet the...
Well, it doesn't seem that we... I mean, this is what we have to do.
Yeah. It matches all the requirements.
It matches all the requirements.
With that, I move that we approve conditional use permit for a hundred-and-seventeen-unit townhome project located at Three-Fifty West California Drive in the TOD zone with the findings included in the staff report.
I second.
Can I get a roll call? Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Snow?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Adam, you want to come up for the next one?
I don't have the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Brad Reynolds requests the preliminary subdivision approval of a hundred-and-seventeen-unit development located at Three-Fifty West California Drive in the transit-oriented development TOD zone. Adam?
So this is before you tonight, as the preliminary subdivision... Whoops, I went too far. There we go. Let's go back to the plat. This is before you tonight to review and take action on this. State law has recently changed, and so therefore, final plats are handled at a staff level. And so this is handled here at the planning commission, and you will not see the final plat. That will remain at the staff level, but if it complies with the preliminary, then it will go through its normal process. But this is just the second part of this, and it matches the recently discussed site plan and conditional use permit. So it's just allowing individual ownership of each unit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Developer, do you have anything to add to that? Seems like we've covered it, but...
It's open to the public hearing?
Yep. A public hearing's open.
Public hearing's open.
Yep.
That's why I was wondering if it was the same. Lauren Butler, this is for approval to build this units, right?
This is for the subdivision.
For the subdivision itself.
Just to make it a subdivision, so you can sell it.
It's the hundred... Yes, it's a hundred-and-seventeen ownership, townhomes, but this is the one, right?
Correct.
Okay, this is for your approval to go forward, true? Okay.
For the subdivision part.
On the subdivision... Yes, on the subdivision.
To approve that it's a subdivision, so that they can sell it.
To clarify, it's the subdivision that's going to be approved right now.
Yes.
Right? Okay. I went on the Brad Reynolds website earlier when I found out about this. To get the approval would mean that you have to wait before they pre-sell them. They're pre-selling them now. It's on their website, under upcoming communities. To contact Donna Marie Crowley is the one that you contact to receive the ability to buy these units. And I wasn't quite sure how that could work, that he could... That that could be pre-sold now, when it hasn't even been approved to be built yet. So that's one of the concerns that I had, that this was like... And I know that staff does all kinds of good stuff, and they have all the dots, the I's and the T's. But this has happened before, where they try and pre-sell them, or things have not worked out. So it's kind of like, all these people that have come, hoping to make their wishes known for this subdivision, it's useless because it's already under construction, it's already being sold. And so people that may be wanting to buy them in good faith, what happens if they choose to reduce those? It's great if they do, because they could still probably pre-sell them, but I just didn't understand how they could pre-sell them now without the approval of the building. So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask our attorney that question real quick? Is that an issue? Is that... I've never...
That would be something I'd have to research. This is the first time I'm hearing of that. But I... I mean, off the hip, I don't see that being as an issue, but I don't know the circumstances of how they're arranging that. But that would be something I'd have to look into and get back.
As an other bill, I would say it's probably just contract law. They would contract. It's against the law.
Okay.
I can respond to that.
Please.
Short answer is that we're kind of getting people on a waiting list right now, but there's not anyone who is under contract at this time to purchase these properties. So it's just a waiting list of people who are interested once we've recorded the plat and are ready to sell.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else?
Any other public comment? Please? State your name.
My name is Megan Davis. You mentioned that they were required to approve it if they check all the boxes, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's a conditional use permit, we're bound to the rules of the city's pre-approved.
I understand that. I would just ask for a little bit of empathy for the people who live in this. I understand you all live in Midvale. There are so many cars that park on the street already. A hundred-and-seventeen is a lot. Like they mentioned, townhomes are not for one person. One person's not gonna live there. So it's not a hundred-and-seventeen people, like someone else mentioned. This is gonna be a lot of people. I guess I don't know... That's something I will need to research, is not for you to answer why approval is needed when so many people have... Or required when so many people have concerns. That's tough for all of us who live there and just have to accept that. I guess, like someone else mentioned, too, Midvale... We moved to Midvale because we thought it's a little bit smaller city than Salt Lake. We thought it was established already, so we weren't gonna have to worry about the increase in traffic. I have a family that lived down in Elk Ridge in Utah County, and it's booming with new construction, which is so frustrating for the residents. I would just ask, I guess, if you have to approve, you have to approve, and there's nothing we can do, and that sucks. But if there is something you can do, like the traffic, left turn lane would be great, the safety of the Midvale City residents. My five-year-old son would love to have neighbors, more kids in the neighborhood, and I know that townhomes would bring that in. But a hundred-and-seventeen is so many. Just think, in your neighborhood, would you like to have two, three hundred more people poured into the single area? Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, we recognize, we understand, we live in Midvale. Sometimes, we can't base it on our feelings.
Well, it's not...
And so that's hard. That's hard for us. So we have no say in the traffic. This body doesn't have a say in the traffic. You go... You have to talk to who's in charge of that. We are not. And each one of you should be voicing that to the city and voicing the concern for that. We can't do anything about that. The city can't. The more people that talk to them about it, you know, the squeaky wheel? Same thing. Talk to them about it, talk to them about it, talk to them about it. That's... We have no say in that. I understand the frustration. I live in a condo complex. It's hard. No parking. Where do people park? Sometimes they're across the street. I mean, we get it. It's not that we're trying to be mean or not listening. We are... It's frustrating sometimes to us, because there's nothing we can do about it. And so, go to the city. That's your best bet.
Adam, what's the name of the... There's a group inside Midvale that is willing to hear about traffic concerns. Would you... There is a traffic committee. Traffic committee. But I think what I'm hearing, and I hear this often, whether it's here or other places, there's... There seems to be a frustration at maybe the level of development, and the place to voice those concerns is really to the council members. And if you feel that the zoning should be changed, they have that ability to make those considerations. But as of where it is right now, it's zone TOD, it's zone TOD for a reason, but the council is also willing to listen to every resident who comes in and hear their ideas, so...
They are your elected people. And so that's different, too, than us. We volunteer, we come and do this, we try and do our best, and we really are concerned. I've spoken up before to developers and chastised a few, and, you know, not really my place, but I was pretty passionate about it. Your council, who you vote for, makes a difference. Makes a huge difference who is your council member. That's who you talk to. You get more done that way.
Is there any more public comment?
Mary Lou Damianovich, Elm Street. Who would you talk to? I thought there was an ordinance that you cannot park on a city street from November to April. That is no longer an ordinance?
It's not necessarily that straightforward. It has to do with predicted snowfall.
Well, yes. But there has been, of course, snowfall, and the people on Millennium Way? How can the road be cleared cor- How can the road be cleared correctly?
Yeah, if you see concerns, and you think that they don't match the ordinance requirements, we do have a code enforcement officer that's pretty active, and I would encourage you to reach out to code enforcement.
Call the city.
Call the city.
The website also has a great portal to put in requests, I've used it recently for traffic lights that were out, and it was fixed in less than 24 hours. So I recommend either calling or going online, there's so much information there.
Okay.
And it's going to be accurate and truthful on the city.
Hallelujah, thank you.
I've called code enforcement myself, and it works really well.
Yep.
Yeah, daily.
John Lovanger again, from Spur Street, I'm a close friend of Paul Glover. We're telling people to go to the city council with these complaints, but what people fail to realize is, the city council can't do any more than you guys can, because their hands are tied by transit-oriented developments that are pushed through from the state legislature, state legislature that defines what you can and can't approve, once it meets certain criteria that the city has established, because the state legislature requires the city to do that. We can talk to, we're blue in the face, but it ain't going to do any good, from this perspective, or from the city council perspective, it's a legislature that needs to keep their hands out of the issues of the city government.
And you are correct, it is your elected officials, so.
I've discovered a little something here, all these guys-
Your name, please?
Said they were going to get-
What was your name?
Oh, Randy Duffin.
Thank you.
They said they were all going to get rodent control out there, when is that going to happen?
I'm sorry.
It's the developer, not us.
And you? When's that going to happen? Tomorrow?
I'll make a call tomorrow, we'll see how it goes.
That's what the guy said last time. I'm done.
Thank you. If there is no more public comment, I move that we close, close the public comment period. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Attorney, we already kind of know, but you can say.
Yes, this is similar to the conditional use permit, it is an administrative decision for this Planning Commission to make, if it meets the city code, you are required to approve it.
I would say Brad Reynolds built a good product, guys. There's a lot worse that you can have out there developing, whether you-
Oh, they can't hear you?
Oh, sorry, Brad Reynolds built a good product, I mean, you guys might not want the three-story units, the 100 and whatever, but out of all the builders you could have, he's in the top. So, there is that.
Can we put a motion up on the screen?
I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision located at 350 West California Drive, with the findings noted in, included in the staff report.
I second.
Roll call.
Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Snow?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparian?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is, John, I'm going to mess this name up, Semenoni?
Semenoni.
Yeah. Request conditional use approval for 1.53 acre multifamily development located at 7444 South State, in the multifamily residential medium to high-density RM-25 Zone. And Johnny, thank you, do you want to wait just a minute? Let's wait just a minute, if you guys want to clear out, you can, you're welcome to stay, it is a public hearing, whatever you choose to do. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, we appreciate your participation.
We really do.
Probably good.
Okay, I think it's quiet enough. Okay, so this is for, this is also two items, same project, conditional use permit, and then the second one is a, excuse me, small-scale master plan. A little bit of background on this project, you've probably seen a similar addition of this last August, that came before you in a public hearing, for a rezone from SF1, Single Family Residential 1, and State Street Zone to medium-to-high-density multifamily RM25. That also went to council September 17th last year, and they tabled that decision of the rezone in lieu of a development agreement, which was passed just this last month in March. And I'll just list a couple things that pertain in the development agreement to this project that informed the site design. So the development agreement required small-scale master plan, which is required by ordinance anyways. As part of it, I'll skip ahead a couple slides, it limits the height within 60 feet of the west property line, so in reference, it'd be, you know, the western part, the deepest part, where there is a current street that deadends to the property that they are not connecting to. So 60 feet from that, they're limited to 35, or, excuse me, 33 feet in height, as well as doing a landscape buffer with trees, which you can see on the landscape plan. And this is all, you know, above and beyond the ordinance that's required by the development agreement the council approved. A couple other things, there is an existing easement there on the southern part of the property that connects to 7500 South, as part of the agreement, that is to be maintained, they can use it for utility purposes, for connecting to water sewer, et cetera, but as far as buildable, they, they aren't to be using that. And also, as part of this, there is a provision that future subdivision approval is needed for this project, which I'm sure will be before you guys for a preliminary subdivision, as, that is required to come before you with a public hearing. I think that's about it, and these are obviously renderings of what the townhomes would look like. So, any questions for me?
We have fire approval on this?
Yes, yep. Yeah. There's fire turnarounds in the back there. Yeah, and there's-
Using those Ts, yeah.
Yeah, and there's-
It's like a dumbbell or something, I forget what they call it.
Correct. But yes, fire, or fire marshal has signed off on this.
Okay. Thank you.
And the developer is here, if you've got questions for him.
Okay. The developer, let's come up.
I recognize you from last time, so.
Tell us your name, so I don't mess it up too badly.
No, you got it perfectly, this is, my name's John Semenoni, I'm with Signature Homes, office is at 630 East South Temple. Just a few things I wanted to note, I, initially, when we brought this to you, I think there was some contention around the project, which is completely understandable, and regretfully, we didn't hold the neighborhood meeting initially, and that is something that's mandatory now for every single project we do, I wish we had done that initially. But I'm happy to report that anybody who's reached out to us, we've, we've, you know, gone as far as we could to collaborate with them, and it's been a really good learning experience, you know, we're always trying to improve on the process, and make sure everybody's heard, and I hope people feel that way, because we are, you know, we're really trying to bring something that should be beneficial to the neighborhood. In that development agreement, there was a lot of, a lot of really, really solid mitigants that were put in place, and I think, I think if this goes through, you know, we should be able to build a really beautiful project, and hopefully bring some good homeownership, and tax bases, and, and, you know, some, some new residents as well, so.
So are these for sale?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, they are.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, that's, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open this up to the public hearing, please state your name, be nice to me.
My name's Mike Smith, my, my mom, Sandra Smith, is right adjacent to that, and can I ask the developer a question? Because he just sat and said how, you know, he had contacted people, but we just learned about this, but, and, so, we have a couple questions. There's, there's a number of fence lines there, and instead of there being a hodgepodge, is there a some, is there a plan to, we're talking about the west side?
Can we make sure to speak into the mic, please, for the minute?
Sorry.
Sorry, she has to do minutes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't, that's my first question for you. Can we talk about it, because, you know, I mean, the reason, there was a bit of frustration when you were-
Saying you kind of reached out to the neighborhood, well, the main person that that's going to affect, you didn't reach out to her.
So, what I said was that we put her on to another question. People who reached out, we collapsed.
Oh, okay. I mean, we're just late to the finding out. So, so that's why I have the, a couple of questions, so that's my first question, as far as what you're going to do along that fence line. The other one is the easement that you said that you're, you know, is for utilities or whatever, I mean, what's going to prevent that from not being a walkway, people headed over to the train tracks?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah.
Can I, can I clarify real quick?
I, I got the impression that it had, okay, good.
We're having a really hard time getting this in our meeting minutes, and that doesn't seem fair to those who could not attend, so I think we need to rein it in a little bit, and ask questions this way?
I did.
Sure, sorry, but we're not getting it in the meeting minutes.
Oh, sorry.
So when you're looking that way, we-
All right, I'll try harder.
And we also are down to a minute, so I want to point that out.
Can we meet?
Perfect.
Johnny, did you want to add something?
Yeah, let me clarify, so the, that access, the access easement that goes from 7500, it is in favor of a parcel that is there, that entire access, nothing is being touched there, so the access easement is staying in place, and the city council ensured that with the development agreement, so no sort of access, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but-
Your understanding of our last meeting, that is, that's under challenge for that to be used in any traffic?
Correct, yep, nothing's going to get used, yeah, no vehicle or pedestrian, there's, I believe-
You guys, we got to put this in the minutes, so if you have something to say, I'm sorry, it has to be that way, you have to come up to the mic, and she has to be able to document it.
But there's going to be screening, and I want to say even possibly a fence there, so that there's no access whatsoever to 7500 from the, the project, and that was specifically, you know, taken care of from issues from the residents that they had, when they expressed concerns, and the city council took that in consideration when they approved the development agreement for the rezone for this property. So no access is going to be had down that easement that exists.
Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you, tell us your name.
I will actually come up here.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Peters, I'm at 52 West, 7500 South, that easement is my easement, and John and I have had several conversations trying to deal with this, because I'm a realist, and I know this is somehow going to go through with someone, and I didn't catch this gentleman's name that was spoke first. I can attest that he is concerned about as much as he can accomplish, don't get me wrong, I don't like it either, but I am a realist, and we've, we've worked on some things that, that he has lended ear to, thank goodness, and we'll see how that progresses, so, I can't, I can't answer for people who come in late, this has been going on for some time, so if you're now just hearing about it, somebody's not paying attention, that's all I can say. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Kaprophalk, I'm just questioning where this, this latest one is, on State Street, is the east or west side?
Seventy-four, four, south.
East or west side?
West, west side of State, where the massage parlor.
Okay, I'm just, are there already buildings there that will be ripped down? Because I can't think of anything open there, except for the Department of Workforce Services.
There's two buildings.
There's two buildings there?
Yeah.
And is it going to go north and south, or is it going to go east and, east and west, the building, the actual apartments?
Can we put that back up? Josh, can you put the plat back up? I'm just trying to figure out where, where it is, because I don't, the only big opened
area that I know of-
The right-hand side is State Street in this picture.
Is that where a smooth violin?
Oh, okay.
Yes, by the violin, yeah. And then at the bottom is 7500 South.
The, the bottom of the map?
Yes. Correct. So the easement they're talking about is going north, going up?
It's a blue line, a blue slotted line.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Johnny.
Any other public comment?
I'm sorry, you guys, this is Lorraine Butler, for the Smiths, I'm sorry that they came in late, because I've been working, trying to keep everybody together, plus the fact that I was, it doesn't matter. Anyway, I've contacted Mr. Semenoni a lot during this process, more so than I've ever had any interaction with any developer ever. Trying to protect our neighborhood, making sure that there will not, that they wouldn't have a road to go through, drainage lane, to protect that neighborhood. They're already looking at a transportation deal that was done by the government that may prevent them from having a, a nice quiet cul-de-sac anymore. So, trying to keep that quieter and under construction, yes, the old pizza place that's now a massage parlor, it's going to be a much better thing. Grateful that it's not coming out on 7500 South, because that was a huge issue, and a real concern. Trying to keep the neighborhood informed is kind of hard, because I don't do very good group checks sometimes, but I'm grateful for the way that, that it has been taken care of to make that west bank of homes further away from their property, from the Smiths' property, that they will be able to have that buffer of trees, and, and an eight-foot fence that will protect them. I wish more and more developers would take the recommendations from staff to contact the neighborhood, to find out from all the neighbors, because I was thinking the other day, all the TOD things that are just in my neighborhood, I could succeed and become a city all by myself, I'm going to have so many people there, because I'm looking at State Street development, so you're going to see me a lot, and it's because I care, and I'm grateful that you've helped make this one not like it was going to be, and grateful that the developer would work it. Thank you for concern, staff, I feel bad for them, because sometimes Big Brother says different things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If there's no more public comment, I move that we close the public comment portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing's closed.
Legal.
Legal? Nothing new?
Nothing new.
Got you.
I will say, Ms. Butler, I would never mistake you for not caring, so I would just say that.
Okay, here's our next one, correct? Oh, no, we need to do a motion, pardon me, let's do a motion.
I move that we approve the conditional use permit for a 27-unit townhome project located at 7444 South State Street in the RM-25 Zone, with the findings included in the staff report.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice, sorry? Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Snow?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparian?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Next we have, same, only we're requesting-
Yeah, so just due to the size of this property being over an acre, it does require a small-scale master plan, which again, was part of the development agreement- a small-scale master plan, um, which again, was part of the development agreement that they obtained this approval. Um, so it's same project, um, just a additional approval required for it, so.
Okay. John, do you wanna come up and talk again? Do you need to?
You need to read the introduction.
Oh, yeah, let me read that. I'm so sorry.
You're okay, you're okay.
Okay. John Semenani, request small-scale master plan approval for a 27-unit development loc- located at 7474, I mean, 7444 South State Street, multifamily residential medium-high-density RM25 zone. Johnny?
He gave us the spiel.
Yep, and that's the spiel I just gave, so.
Okay. Sorry, I was premature on that. Let's open that up to the public hearing now.
I think everyone said what they're gonna say, so. So with no further public comment, I move that we-
Please.
Oh, yeah? You got it just in time.
Yeah, it was close.
Whew!
Um, Nancy Beck's, and I was just wondering what the price point of those would be?
I'm sure he'd be happy to negotiate with you.
What is the price point?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up, John.
So right now, we're shooting for 450 to 500.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With no further public hearings, I move that we close the public hearing portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Legal, same, more?
Same.
Okay, nothing else?
I move that we approve the small-scale master plan for a 27-unit townhome development located at 7444 South State Street, with the findings included in the staff report.
I second the motion.
Roll call, please. Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Yes.
Commissioner Snow?
Yes.
Commissioner Casparian?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Motion pass. Thank you. Okay, next is our staff update. Another business.
Um, I didn't know, uh-
No, uh-
So are we gonna discuss the land use?
No, sorry, that got pulled from the agenda.
Yeah, I'm not studying.
I went to the meeting, I already went to my meeting on Monday.
So, yeah, we will have a meeting on the, what is it, 23rd in two weeks? Um, should be an exciting one, so.
So we won't go over that as well.